Morning everyone and welcome to the Rote Meeting of the County Council being held on Wednesday, the 24th of March at 10am. The meeting is being streamed live to the council's website and will be available to view for a minimum of six months. Please be aware that any footage from the meeting may be used in subsequent media broadcasts. I am councillor Katie Corrigan, Chair of the Council. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members, officers, members of the public and the media who are watching this live stream. Before we commence with today's business, it is with a sad duty to report the passing of former Durham County Councillor, Sedgfield Borough Councillor and Spennymoor Town Councillor and Alderman Ben Ord and Mrs Maxine Robinson, the wife of councillor John Robinson. Maxine was John's consort during his time as Chair and Vice Chair of Durham County Council. Maxine has also served as a councillor on Sedgfield Town Council and has also been Mayor of the Town Council. Can I ask everyone to give a moment's reflection out of respect for both Ben and Maxine as we extend our deepest sympathies to their families at this sad time? Thank you. Thank you, members. I will quickly recap the housekeeping issues for us all to follow. For those participating in the meeting, if you could please, only speak when invited to speak by myself as Chair. Keep your microphone on mute at all times unless invited to speak. It is really important that we do this in order to prevent any feedback through the system. If you wish to speak, please type RTS in the chat function. This will indicate to me that you wish to speak. Please bear in mind that all participants can see the messages in the chat function. Once invited to speak, please introduce yourself with your name and position unless you have already introduced yourself earlier in the meeting. If you are having issues with connectivity, try switching off your camera and just use the audio function. If connectivity issues continue, you may have to leave the meeting and re-join to get a better connection. Please follow these simple rules and will help us to run this meeting as efficiently as possible. Thank you. That moves on to item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on 24th of February 2021?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please? Councillor Hennig, thank you.
Can I have a seconder?
Second the minutes to having councillor near you.
Thank you. Does the council agree the minutes as a correct record?
Agreed.
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 If there is any dissent, the minutes should indicate through the meeting chat.
Yeah.
No indications have been received. Thank you. Can I confirm that the minutes are agreed as a correct record? That moves us on to item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? I'll briefly pause to allow for any declarations. declarations. That moves us on to item three, chairs announcements. Colleagues, as previously, in previous meetings, I have seeking agreement from the council to waive standing orders to allow for the extension of the meeting should it go beyond two and a half hours and if time allowed for motions goes beyond 30 minutes. Do I have a seconder, please?
Yes, Chair. Councillor Ozzie Johnson, Vice Chair for Durham County Council, I second the proposal.
Thank you. Can the council agree to this course of action?
Agreed.
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 Agreed. Thank you. With the local elections looming in May, this is my final full council meeting where I have the opportunity to thank all those who have supported me during my extended term of office. As you may know, neither myself or councillor Johnson, Vice Chair for the council, are standing in the local elections. However, we remain in office as Chair and Vice Chair for council until the annual council and will therefore have opportunity to see returned members then. Good luck to all of those seeking reelection in May. I wish you all the very best. To those who are not seeking reelection, I would like that we place on record our thanks to all of you who have dedicated service to the council and the communities you have served and wish you well for the future. Thank you. That moves us on to item four, leaders' report. Can I invite councillor Hennig, leader of the council, to present his report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This week marks the anniversary of the start of the first national lockdown and it has been a challenging year for all of us. Everyone has been affected in some way and I would like to pass on my deepest sympathies to all those who have lost family or friends during the pandemic and we wish those who remain ill a speedy recovery. Life has changed dramatically during the past 12 months, but our communities have shown resilience, courage and determination. We have come together to support one another and adapt to a new way of life. Our staff have had to adapt and innovate to ensure services continue to be delivered. Yesterday, we joined in a National Day of Reflection, taking a moment to remember those we had lost, consider the sacrifices that have been made and recognise how the hardships of the past year have helped bring us together. The front of County Hall was also lit to demonstrate our support for everyone who has been affected by the pandemic. As part of that process of reflection, we must also look to the future and our focus now is very much on the county's recovery. Our infection rates have fallen considerably since our last council meeting, but our public health team continues to work hard to support those affected and share information to help minimise cases of coronavirus. As part of this work, more than 80 people have signed up to become COVID community champions and are proving invaluable in our mission to ensure people have clear, accurate and up-to-date information. The volunteers receive training to become trusted voices in their community and I would like to thank them for everything they are doing. Turning to cabinet news, this month saw a very busy cabinet meeting. Members heard about our priorities and expectations for supporting levelling up for our communities and the economy as the county emerges into recovery. An initial investment of at least 500 million is needed from the government's levelling up and recovery funds if we are to support the development of ambitious projects in the county and deliver long-term and sustainable economic growth. Cabinet approved proposals to build three new state-of-the-art leisure centres in Siem, Chesterley Street and Bishop Auckland as part of a wide-ranging programme to transform leisure provision across the county. Future reports will set out how our wider leisure offer will be developed for all our residents. A proposal to introduce free town centre parking after 2pm was also given the go-ahead, part of a package of measures to support residents and businesses in the economic recovery from the coronavirus pandemic. Our towns and villages programme continues apace with Cabinet endorsing the strategy's approach to tackling derelict land and buildings. Reducing the number of long-term empty properties is integral to the council's housing strategy with advice and practical and financial support being offered to owners to help remedy issues and bring buildings and sites back into use. Pilot projects to tackle derelict non-residential sites have already taken place in areas such as Sacristan and Siem. Cabinet has also backed the introduction of new targeted delivery plans for areas of the county in need of social housing. These plans include measures such as buying and refurbishing empty properties to meet demand. The properties, the proposals are part of the council's 70 million five-year plan to create 500 homes for rent in County Durham. Members heard about the council's extensive and ongoing work to combat climate change. Provisional estimates show that our carbon emissions have reduced by 16% in one year due to energy efficiency work within our operations. These efforts will be boosted by our work to encourage the uptake of electric vehicles, with work currently taking place to install more than 100 community electric vehicle charge points across the county. Our climate emergency response plan also includes a range of measures to manage our woodlands and expand tree coverage in the county. Trees and woodlands have a significant role to play in carbon absorption and increasing biodiversity. Turning to senior management news, in the coming weeks, we will say goodbye to Stuart Timmis, our Head of Development and Housing, who is heading off to take on new challenges in West Northamptonshire. Stuart joined the County Council in 2009 following the local government review, having previously served at Gateshead Metropolitan Borough Council and prior to that at Sedgfield Borough Council. Stew's has played an integral part in a wide range of major regeneration projects over the past 12 years. Richard Crane is also leaving the council for Pastures New. Richard joined the Authority in 2018 as Head of Education and Skills and has led his team through some particularly difficult times over the past year as schools had to overcome the many challenges presented by the pandemic. And in recent weeks, we've also seen the retirement of Jimmy Bennett, the county's Clean and Green Manager, and Brian Buckley, Strategic Highways Manager, who are both beginning new chapters in their lives. I know many of you will have worked closely with both Jimmy and Brian on local issues over the years. I'm sure all members will join me in wishing them all the very best for the future. Chair, council will recall that late last year, I asked officers to look into all options for appeal of a National Valuation Office Agency decision that council tax not be backdated for a building in County Durham. Officers have concluded that the prospect of success in challenging the Valuation Office decision is extremely low. Therefore, I cannot propose such a course of action, though I am sure others may make a case for a national change given the public interest that has been in this matter. As I said earlier, we continue to work hard to support the county's economic recovery and this month have seen the announcement of free public wifi in Siem and Barnard Castle. As well as encouraging people to spend more time in the towns once coronavirus restrictions are lifted, the wifi will provide another way for businesses to connect with their customers. Pilot projects are already up and running in Bishop Auckland and Stanley and we have plans to extend the scheme further. In concert meanwhile, we are forging ahead with our plans to enhance Concerts Town Centre, drawing on its distinct character to create a vibrant shopping destination with thriving independent retailers. Following successful projects in Victoria Road, Wesley Street and Front Street, we're now focusing on Middle Street where £1 million worth of improvements are planned as part of our towns and villagers programme. Work is starting on Aitli Head's Business Park, paving the way for 4,000 new jobs and a 400 million boost to the economy. We've pledged £6 million for the project's first phase with a further £6 million from the government's Getting Building Fund. In Siem, former railway tracks are to be transformed into a public area that celebrates the town's heritage as part of the second phase of the Siem Townscape Heritage Project. This is a 1.6 million scheme supported by the National Lottery Heritage Fund to enhance the town's historic centre. And in Haudenwein, we've allocated 4.5 million from our towns and villages investment plan for a major regeneration scheme, boosting the 1.5 million already set aside from the capital programme. It will allow us to demolish vacant buildings that have blighted residents' lives for years and replace them with new high-quality homes. We've put a call out to government for the reinstatement of the Leamside Line which runs for 18 miles from the Terzdale junction near Furry Hill to Peel Horring Gateshead. Reopening the line would provide major economic, environmental and social benefits to the region as well as providing extra capacity for the East Coast Main Line. And we've also seen the fantastic news of further investment by Hitachi in its plans in Newton-Aitliff. The launch of new welding and painting facilities will allow the company to manufacture its signature high-tech aluminium carriage shells on-site rather than importing them from overseas. Our youth justice service recently enjoyed success at the Children and Young People Now Awards with its parenting support group winning the Family Justice Award. The service was also highly commended in the Youth Justice Award for its work with the Skill Mill. The Skill Mill is a social enterprise business which directly employ young people who have previously offended for six months, helping to reduce re-offending and support young people into further long-term employment. I'm sure you will join me in offering them congratulations on their success. We've pledged to go further in our fight against fly tipping as the number of incidents across County Durham falls for the fourth year running. Figures released by DEFRA show we dealt with 6,548 cases in 2019-20, a 10% reduction in the number of incidents compared to the previous year. In honour of International Women's Day earlier this month, female members of staff shared their experience of working in traditionally male-dominated roles when we hosted a webinar for County Durham schoolchildren. As you all know, the council is an equal opportunities employer with a gender-balanced cabinet, leadership and senior management team. Its gender pay gap is also one of the lowest among local authorities in the region, though as ever, there is still more to do. We also celebrated World Social Work Day online with a series of virtual events with some of our own staff offering advice, guidance and inspirational stories to their colleagues. Coming up, the council's Morrison-Busty Depot is set to become low-carbon site as part of an 8.3 million scheme which will see a large-scale of an £8.3 million scheme which will see a large-scale solar farm built to power its services. The depot has received £5 million from the European Regional Development Fund to carry out a major retrofit, while we have provided an additional £3.3 million from our own Investor Save Fund for the project. It is expected that it will save more than 1,000 tonnes of CO2 per year and reduce our total emissions by up to 4%. Work has also begun on the new Durham History Centre, which will bring together archive, heritage and registration services at a single location when completed by autumn 2022. We've also submitted a stage two bid to the National Lottery Heritage Fund to deliver an activity and innovative digital engagement and events programme. Finally, Chair, as we've already heard, we're about to enter an election period for county as well as town, parish and PCC elections. A number of our colleagues have made the decision to stand down this May, which includes many experienced councillors, not least Chair yourself and the Vice Chair of the Council, but also the Deputy Leader of the Council and Cabinet Member for Neighbourhoods, who previously led two of our district councils for many years. Can I take this opportunity to thank not only councillors Katie Corrigan, Ozzy Johnson, Alan Napier and Brian Stephens, but everyone who is standing down at this election for your hard work on behalf of our communities? You will all be missed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm aware that a few members are wishing to speak, but as councillor Martin has a question on the leaders' report, I'll bring in him first. Councillor Martin?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Craig Martin for North Lodge in Chesterley Street. And as councillor Henning mentioned, the Levelling Up Fund, it allows Durham County Council to bid for up to £20 million per constituency with the support of the MP. The deadlines for this are really tight, with the proposals needing to be submitted in June. Despite local elections and the restrictions this puts on council operations, can the leader assure us that six full and feasible bids, one for each constituency, will be submitted by the deadline? That he will also work with all of our MPs to ensure that all of County Durham has an equal and as good an opportunity as possible to receive the up to maximum £20 million per constituency? Thank you.
Councillor Henning, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you. And can I thank councillor Martin for advance notice of his question? We welcome the invitation and opportunity to bid into the new Levelling Up Funds and will be taking our role as the lead authority very seriously in order to maximise the benefits to County Durham from this fund. It's important that this and all funding opportunities are targeted to improve prosperity across the county. The initial guidance issued by government for the Levelling Up Fund seeks one proposal in total from each parliamentary constituency to focus on transport, town centres and cultural and heritage assets, submitted in June 2021 and with investments that can commence delivery 2021 to 22. It will also be important that we look at how proposals come together coherently, benefiting County Durham. Each activity needs to be developed in a way that contributes to net zero, reducing deprivation, economic inequality and has the support of local stakeholders and the constituency MP in a very short period of time and during an election period, as we've heard. Therefore, it's a complex fund with a complex process with full bidding guidance still to be released. Officers are currently developing the engagement process and will be working with members, key stakeholders and MPs. And we will be developing the right projects for each constituency in County Durham that gives the greatest chance of success. Thank you for the question.
Councillor Hopgood?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to come in with what the leader said regarding the officers and the members who were either leaving or standing down. So I'd also, sorry, I didn't introduce myself, I'm Dr Hopgood, from the Newton Hall Division, but leader of the Liberal Democrats. So I'd also like to thank Richard Crane and Stuart Timmis and wish them every success in their new roles. And Brian Buckley and Jimmy Foralot and wish them all the very best for a long and happy retirement. Their joint service approaches 100 years to the local authority, so it shouldn't be underestimated what we're losing there with these two members retiring. And finally, to members who've chosen not to stand for reelection, from whatever political persuasion, I wish you every success for the future, whether it be a new career or it be retirement. Your service to your communities is unquestionable and regardless of discussions and disagreements, we do, I hope, have the utmost respect for the positions that we hold and therefore I wish you all the best for the future. And for those who are here next time, I hope I'll be one of them. I look forward to working with you if I'm also back. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. I would also like to pick up on the leaders' comments about retiring members. And of course, there may be some of us who don't intend to retire, who don't come back in May anyway, we must have our thoughts with them. But in May, I assume we will have a chance to talk about the chairman and vice-chairman councillors Corrigan and Johnson, perhaps not about the retiring Cabinet members. So I'd like to make particular mention of councillors Napier and Stephens for their decades of service to local government in the county and for their 11 years of service and crucial roles in this Durham County Council. And my best wishes go to all those members who are retiring and thanks to them too. And if some of us don't come back in May, that want to, my commiserations in advance as well on that score. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll briefly pause for any more requests. No requests have been received. Can I ask the council to note the report?
Not to report, Chair.
Noted.
Thank you. That moves on to item five, questions from the public. Two questions have been received for today's meeting. The questions will be presented on the screen to the meeting. One questioner has joined the meeting remotely to ask their question in person. I will invite Dr Lawrence Welsh to ask his question, then invite the portfolio holder to respond. No discussion will take place on the matter once the question has been answered and there will be no supplementary questions allowed. The reply will be posted on the council's website. Can I now invite Dr Lawrence Welsh to ask his question, please? Dr Lawrence Welsh, are you on mute? Dr Lawrence Welsh, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can, yes.
Great. Thanks for asking me, letting me ask the question. This question relates to the privatisation of our NHS. Durham County Council, who alongside the Durham CCGs, are jointly responsible for the local arm of the integrated care system. As CCGs are under instruction from NHS England, County Durham councillors, sitting on the Health and Wellbeing Board and the Adults Wellbeing and Health Security Committee, provide the only democratic accountability within the local ICS. We are aware of the ongoing support of individual councillors for a publicly funded and publicly provided NHS and we ask that you are on your guard against inadvertently colluding with the political decisions to dismantle our NHS. The main question is, what is Durham County Council doing to prevent the steady and insidious NHS privatisation process? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I refer the question to councillor Lucy Hovell's Cabinet Portfolio for adult and health services to respond, please?
Thank you, Chairman. As I've said, I'm Lucy Hovell's Cabinet Member for Health. I represent the Trindon and Thornley Division. Can I first of all thank Dr Welsh for his question? The council, through our scrutiny committee, the Health and Wellbeing Board and the Local Authority Seven are working with the NHS to influence the development of the integrated care system. We have an excellent track record in County Durham of joint working with the NHS partners. The Community Services Contract, which brings together the council and the trust to care for our most vulnerable residents and our joint commissioning, are practical examples of public services cooperating. Cabinet on the 16th of May agreed to strengthen our local partnerships with the NHS, to keep as much decision-making as possible at a local place level so that we can promote the founding values of the NHS in any future commissioning.
Thank you. The second question has been submitted by Mr Edwin Simpson, who is unable to attend today's meeting remotely. Mr Simpson's question is displayed on the screen. The Cabinet Portfolio Holder will respond to Mr Simpson in writing following the meeting and the response will be posted on the council's website. Thank you. That moves us on to item six, petitions. There are no petitions for consideration. That moves on to item seven, annual review of the constitution. Can I invite the Head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. I'm pleased to present this year's annual review of the constitution, which includes changes that we would have brought forward last year but for the Covid-19 pandemic. The review has followed the same process as it has in previous years and the changes proposed are relatively minor in nature, intended to ensure that the constitution reflects best practice and the council's up-to-date operational arrangements. It's anticipated that next year's review will be more fundamental. It will have been four years since the last in-depth review and therefore timely, particularly with the start of the new electoral term, to look at provisions more closely. In terms of the proposed changes before you today, these have been considered by the council's cross-party constitutional working group and, where appropriate, the relevant standards planning and scrutiny committees. The proposals were also considered by Cabinet at its meeting last week and changes to the officer scheme of delegation in respect of executive functions were approved and the wider changes recommended to council for approval today. I'd just like to touch on some of the proposed changes. There are some general changes, as I say, to ensure that the council's arrangements reflect the revised County Durham Vision 2035. And there are some updates to clarify the requirements in relation to contracts as well as changes in the organisational structures. Paragraph 35 of the report sets out proposed changes to the council procedure rules, which of course govern the conduct of this meeting. The first one is a proposal to amend the rules of debate to clarify that where a motion is carried in respect of an executive decision or function of Cabinet, then the matter will be referred back to Cabinet for consideration. Council cannot overturn a decision of Cabinet. It's important to clarify that this is in addition to the constitution and not a change or a removal of power from council. It is the position in law that council cannot interfere with a decision of Cabinet and therefore this inclusion is intended to clarify that position rather than change it. Couple of other changes to the council procedure rules are to look to reflect the custom and practice that where nominations to committee and outside bodies are put forward, that they're voted on without debate. And finally, there's a proposal to include provisions for the Chair to invite another member to briefly respond to questions on notice where it transpires that the question falls within their remit. In terms of other changes to draw your attention to, there are a number of amendments proposed to the Member Code of Conduct to ensure that the code reflects the best practice recommendations from the Committee and Standards in Public Lives Report on local government ethical standards, as well as the recently published Local Government Association's Model Code of Conduct. It's also proposed that the code is changed to enable members where they have another relevant interest to be able to speak on a matter before withdrawing. This will enable members to represent their residents' views, particularly in relation to planning matters. Chair, the recommendations are at paragraph five. Can I have a mover to the report, please?
Chair, I'm very happy to move the report as Chair of the Constitution Working Group. As we've heard from the Head of Legal and Democratic Services, it has been our practice to bring changes to the constitution on an annual basis, which I believe to be best practice. Unfortunately, we were unable to do this last year because of the suspension of meetings at that time, so we're picking up some of the changes that would have gone to council at that point. And as we've heard from the Head of Legal and Democratic Services, there are plans for a more comprehensive report next year and also I believe this to be best practice to every few years, as we did a few years ago, look at the constitution in the round. So as Chair of the Constitution Working Group, I'm very happy to move the recommendations.
Can I have a seconded to the report, please?
Yeah, Chair, councillor Hopgood who is to formally second the report.
If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate using the chat function? No requests have been received. Can I ask the council to agree the proposed provisions of the constitution?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. That confirms that recommendation is agreed. That moves us on to item eight, motions on notice. Before we commence with the next item, I will hand over to Helen Lynch, Head of Legal and Democratic Services, to remind us of the rules in relation to motions.
Thank you, Chair. The usual rules of debate apply this morning. Movers of motions will have five minutes to speak and seconders and other speakers will have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. In the event an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate moves to that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time. No further amendments may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. Thank you, Chair.
Can I now invite councillor Tanya Tucker to move her motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, colleagues. Councillor Tanya Tucker, Woodhouse Close, Bishop Auckland. The motion before you this morning is an appeal for your agreement to challenge this government to look at the issue of the vast differences in the costs of gas and electricity by energy providers to end users. I'm not going to read my motion, it's there and you've probably already read it, which I hope you have. When I wrote my motion, I did so in a way that would highlight the problem I was trying to raise in the hope of being able to explain to members who may not have encountered this themselves. We, as a local authority, have schemes to help residents with their difficulties and I'm immensely proud that we are able to help them in this way. But residents shouldn't have to choose between heating and eating. The fundamentals of life are a stable roof over your head, heat, light and sustenance. So why in 2021 are we still struggling with these basics? The remit of the Secretary of State for Business, Energy and Industrial Strategy has four aims, one of which I included in my motion and that's the one with the bullet point. So I'm going to concentrate on that one. That aim says that his remit is to ensure that the country has secure energy supplies that are reliable, affordable and clean. And that's the key word in that sentence, affordable. This is not going to be an easy fix. Nothing life ever is. There are several factors that come into play when providers determine the prices to end users. And just because it's not going to be easy, doesn't mean to say we don't have to try. This motion is about people. This motion is about people. It's about our residents, all of our residents, and ourselves. It's about fairness when it comes to the pricing of energy. It should be affordable, and that means to everyone. I'd like to thank councillor John Clare for his constructive comments on his social media on Sunday. Thank God for Facebook and Diary Day, John. Councillor Clare was kind enough to alert me to the fact that when he was advising his residents of my motion, that he thought it was one of those chaotic opposition motions that would need amending to make any sense. But it was an appeal to the government about fuel poverty, and he was hopeful that everybody would be able to adopt it and support it. Thanks, councillor Clare, but you might want to proofread your own post because paragraph actually doesn't have an 'o' in it. It does have two 'p's, however. I hope that members can look on this motion with an open mind and consider it in the spirit in which it was written. This is definitely a motion about people. It's about us, as well as our residents. Who doesn't want to see changes in the price of our energy, probably one of the biggest costs to each of us? I look forward to seeing what the red pen produces when it amends my motion. I can only hope that when teacher is finished, that I can still recognise the motion as mine. Please support this motion. Thank you, everyone, for listening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The motion requires a seconder? Do we have a second to the motion?
Yeah, can I second that, Chair? Mrs Councillor Anne Reid from the Crook Division.
Are you reserving the right to speak?
I'll speak... Yeah, I reserve the right to speak at the moment. Yeah, thank you.
Bring in councillor Bell.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, speaking in support of the motion, if the red pen comes out, we'll have to see about any amendments. I particularly just want to make sure that the issue of prepayment meters is highlighted in this debate and in anything that we end up writing to the Secretary of State about. The energy companies used to say that the reason for high charges for prepayment meters was when meters was in cash, and the cost of handling cash and collecting cash, et cetera. That excuse is gone, given that people now buy cards or sticks that you take and top up at a shop or a post office, a pay point. So they're getting the money in earlier, there is no excuse for charging people with prepayment meters more. Furthermore, there were some strange practices on people with prepayment meters. I had a constituent who was sent a bill for £280 for electric despite being on a prepayment meter. I rang up, along with the constituents, to sort of like dispute this and said, the clue is in the title, it's a prepayment account, why are you sending a bill? And the answer came back, well, by law, we have to send a bill, even though it's a prepayment meter, to which I retorted, well, in which case, why can't you send a bill that says you are on a prepayment meter and there is nothing to pay? This particular constituent was concerned how they could possibly have run up £280 worth of debt on electricity when their actual meter showed they were in credit to the tune of £20. So I think the whole prepayment meter in particular issue needs sorting out, but I'm happy to support the motion in general. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? Please indicate using the chat function. Councillor Sirtis?
Hello, Chair. I'm just wondering, I was going to speak to an amendment on the motion, but I'm wondering if my councillor colleague, councillor Shaw, is having internet problems?
Give us contact, councillor Shaw.
Indeed, Chair, if I may, I wish to formally move the amendment. Would it be possible to have this on the screen?
Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor Kevin Shaw, cabinet member for Strategic Housing and Assets, and member for Dordon Ward, and I'm moving this amendment today. I understand the issue which this motion attempts to address, however, it is rather confusing how it sets it out and what it's wanting to achieve, and it's really disappointing to come at this particular time, days from elections, and following councillor Tucker's comments, it may have as much to do with social media as it does with social justice. However, Chair, we all know about fuel poverty, as we run our own managing money better scheme, and we've saved customers over £280,000 worth, sorry, £280,000 on fuel bills, and have had over £98,000 of fuel debt written off since the scheme started. And we know all about energy efficiency, as County Durham are the sixth highest authority in uptake of domestic energy efficiency grants nationally, drawing in almost £5 million of grants since 2018. We amend in this motion to enhance and clarify its aims, but the real issues are much broader than what is contained in this motion, and a national mechanism to achieve an outcome needs to be put in place. What we actually need is a national energy tariff forum to be established. chaired by the Office of Gas and Electricity Markets, OGM, this forum should establish regional working groups comprised from key stakeholders, including local authorities, energy supply companies, national fuel poverty charities, and third sector organisations. These regional working groups would fade back to the national forum to disseminate best practice to key stakeholders and existing residents to reduce their energy bills and explore opportunities to maximise the assistance available to households currently using prepayment meters. This would help ensure that the country has secure energy supplies that are reliable and provide affordable heat for all residents, no matter how they pay their bills.
One minute remaining.
I propose this amendment, Chair, at this moment in time, which strengthens the sentiment but also recognises affordable energy bills is interrelated with warm, well-insulated homes, which will reduce energy bills, and also the need for government to be putting the customers' needs first and not the energy company's interests. So I would ask councillor Tucker to support the motion as amended, and ask all members to fully support it.
The motion requires a seconder?
Councillor Angela Sirtis, Chair, portfolio holder for social inclusion. Thank you. I second the amendment. Like councillor Shaw, I do not disagree with the sentiment of councillor Tucker's motion. However, the element of affordability with same-rate tariffs for all will not remove the whole problem of fuel poverty. Fuel poverty on a wider scale needs to be addressed. Fair and equal tariffs would indeed be a great thing. However, what is not being considered in the original motion is that if homes are in need of updated, more efficient central heating systems and/or installation of cavity wall insulation, for example, the fair and consistent tariffs will be lost and still not present as affordable for some households. And like my colleague has said, we do have schemes and programmes on offer, like managing money, which helps households look at their utility costs, and this council does a great deal of communicating these, but we also have other ones which don't go far enough. For example, I was contacted by a resident recently in relation to the grants to replace solid fuel with more efficient gas boilers. They hit every single one of the criteria, except because they had one radiator in their property, they couldn't qualify, so they have to continue to buy in coke to heat their house, heat their water and everything. So for me, that just doesn't present efficiency for what's needed, as well as the cheaper tariffs consistently across the board. We need a commitment from a range of key stakeholders to consider and address all areas of fuel poverty, and we need greater and fairer investment into addressing fuel poverty. We need fairer investment from the government into energy efficiency and insulation schemes for households, where in a lot of cases, people are excluded from accessing them due to their circumstance and restrictive criteria placed upon them. Chair, support this amendment, and I also urge colleagues in the virtual chamber to support too, please. Thank you.
Well, now move on to the debate on the amendment. We have councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm councillor Andrea Patterson, cabinet member for corporate services and rural issues, representing the Crook Division. Chairman, I fully support the sentiment of the motion this morning, but I will be supporting the amendment, and that's because it's much broader than the gap of tariffs and prepayment meters. As we've heard from councillor Sirtis, fuel poverty or being fuel poor is a real issue for our residents in County Durham, and it's even more so in our rural communities. Homes and rural areas are typically less energy efficient, and they can be more reliant on potentially more expensive heating fuels and solid fuels, and that combined with the high levels of deprivation that we have across the county also means that the fuel poverty gap in County Durham is significantly higher than other parts of the country. Chairman, if I may, nationally, the government reported back in 2018 that the average fuel poverty gap of fuel poor households was around £334 a year, but that fuel poverty gap for fuel poor households in rural villages, hamlets and isolated dwellings was £690, which is more than double the national average. What we have in rural villages, hamlets and those isolated places with the poorest fuel poverty energy efficiency ratings of F and G, they've got an average fuel poverty gap of over £1,660 compared with an average fuel poverty gap of £836 for urban households of the same rating. So it's very much higher and much broader than what we have within the motion today, Chair, which is why I'd urge everyone to support the amendment. Our residents also find it very difficult to access some of the government initiatives because they're not designed in a way that's accessible or affordable, and often the blanket approach of many of these schemes leaves many of our rural communities left further behind. Given the scale of rural County Durham, at 89% rural, which I keep banging on about, in the colder climate, it's absolutely...
One minute remaining, councillor.
...that our residents have reliable, affordable and clean energy. So with that, Chairman, I'd urge everyone to support the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkes?
Good morning, Chair. I wonder if councillor Kevin Shaw is going to complain about the next two motions as being too close to election time. One rule for non-Labour councillors, another for the rest of us. A little bit hypocritical. I don't understand why he couldn't send us the amendment even one day or one hour in advance of this meeting, to give us all a chance to figure out what he's actually changed and what it actually says. It's gone off the screen. Some of us were still trying to figure out what it said. As far as I can tell, the problem that was raised by councillor Tucker regarding prepayment meters has kind of been eliminated from this motion now, and I see no reason why that final sentence regarding regardless of how payment is made has been removed. I just don't understand the mentality of the Labour members of this council, who either will refuse to support anything put forward or amend it to death. It's gone on for four years, and hopefully there won't be too many of you left come the election in May.
Councillor Clare?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor John Clare, Acliff North and Midridge. May I apologise to members that have been dragged into this debate, which I did not intend to contribute to whatsoever. And can I point out that it is not about anything personal, and should never have been become, should never have become such. It's about a very important issue that most of us would absolutely agree with. My comments relate, where it would throw away about the nature of the motion being chaotic and needing clarification. My main problem would be that sort of it asks the Secretary of State to make sure they're affordable, when that is within the definition of his job description. So all he's going to do is to write back and say, yes, I agree with that. And it mentions fuel poverty, and that's what the amendment seeks to make the motion about, which sort of is a massive thing, particularly in the west of the county, and which everybody would agree. But when you look back, and I have read the motion, when you look back at the preamble, it's about fuel discrimination, it mentions the complexity of tariffs, it mentions, along with councillor Bell, prepayment tariffs. Sort of, I would point out to councillor Wilkes that none of these were in councillor Tucker's final paragraph anyway, that's nothing to do with councillor Shaw. All councillor Tucker's motion also mentioned that she wants one price for everyone, and part of it was about councillor Tucker's own fuel bill. And sort of, it needed honing, and it needed directing. Sort of, I absolutely applaud the amendment, which makes it very clear to the Secretary of State what we are asking for as a body. And it's very difficult, I would suggest, for anybody in this council to not support this amendment, which absolutely makes it clear. Thank you so much. Which absolutely makes it clear to the Secretary of State that what we want is measures to eliminate fuel poverty. And then what that does, all these other things mentioned by councillor Bell and councillor Tucker suddenly become relevant in that context. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Chair. I've just been looking at this amendment. In my mind, sentences should have a subject, an object and a verb. I can't understand what we're going to do between to and the country. There doesn't say what we're going to do to the country, the county, sorry. Could you explain exactly what this amendment says? Thank you.
Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, Chair. The amendment, just picking up on something that's already been said, it's the final line that's been excluded, no matter how they pay their bill. It's, the biggest issue around this is the different tariffs and the different costs for people with prepayment meters. So to get rid of the sentence, no matter how they pay their bill, it is key to make and show that there's equality and fairness around bills. So I really can't say, other than for political reasons and because it's not a Labour motion, why the amendment is being moved to remove that line.
If anyone else wishes to speak, can they indicate using the chat function, please? Councillor Lethbridge?
Thank you, Chair. Could I speak in support of the motion? I do agree with the thread of the argument as paused by councillors Shaw, Sirtis and Patterson. I regret that the vitriolic point of criticism of councillor Shaw in this debate, in this debate, I would reject the accusation of his being hypocritical. This will not be attained, the social justice, sorry, will not be attained by social media, which is a reference that councillor Shaw made earlier, and I fear that this is the direction in which this is going. I support the amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, I'll bring in councillor Tucker with the right to reply.
Chair, I wonder if we could bring in my seconder? I believe she wants to add something. Is that acceptable before I reply?
Councillor Reid may speak on the amendment, but she'd registered her right to speak in relation to the original motion, and the debate on that has paused for the moment. So she can register to speak on the amendment if she wishes before you give your right to reply, but it will be on the amendment and not the original motion.
Thank you. I just want a point of clarity from legal, if I may. Helen?
Thank you. I just wanted a point of clarity from legal, if I may. Helen, the amendment seems to substantially change my original motion, and I'm just wondering if that actually is not an amendment anymore?
Under the council procedure rules, amendments can involve the removal or addition of words and can seek to propose alternative courses of action, provided that the motion remains relevant that the amendment remains relevant to the original motion. The substance of this is tackling fuel poverty, which is what the original motion is about, and therefore I consider it to be a valid amendment.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a point of clarity, if I may. I had hoped to bring this motion to an earlier meeting, but there was an error in raising the agenda, which was out of my control. So my apologies for it coming just before an election, but I don't think there's any good time to bring a motion like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now, members, we'll now move over to the vote. Members, the vote will follow the procedure using the Teams, Microsoft Teams solution that we've used in previous meetings. So a box will appear shortly on your screen, and it will show the title of the matter we are voting on, which of course will be the amendment. The options will show for vote, vote for, against or abstain. If you select your preference and click submit, and as previously, it's important that you click submit. Once you've submitted your vote, you should get a green tick, which will appear to confirm your vote of choice. The tick indicates that your vote is cast. And once you've done that, you can click done and the box will disappear. Thank you. Closing the vote now. Thank you, members. Votes cast 96, those for 63, those against 29, and four abstentions. The amendment is carried and becomes substantive motion. I'll briefly pause while we have the results on the screen.
Chair, can I say, this is councillor Owen Gunn, that the votes appear on my screen, and I have until just about one minute ago, and I did vote for the amendment.
The vote was closed, but the amendment's been carried. Therefore, we move on to the debate on substantive motion. Anyone wishing to speak, please indicate using the chat function. If no one wishes to speak, I'll bring in, sorry, we have councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I would just like to speak with regards to councillor Tucker's motion, and I will be supporting this motion.
The debate's moved on.
Sorry, so someone else needs to speak first, yes. Yeah, and I'll come back in, yeah?
Sorry, councillor Reed, just to clarify, so the amendment has been carried, so it becomes the substantive motion, so it's as if councillor Tucker's motion was not moved, so that falls away. So you're welcome to speak on this, this being the substantive motion.
All right. So can I, so, well, look, I'll just give you what my opinion is and just tell us if it's not right, you know, that I shouldn't be saying it. But I just wanted to pick up on the stand and the stand in charge in relation to the prepayment gas meters and electric meters. And I just wanted to give you an example because, and in the example that I've got, there was a family which this had a detrimental effect on. So first of all, as you probably know, a stand in charge is applied every day, whether or not you use the gas or electric or not. It's all, it's usually set at a higher rate when you have a prepayment meter. One particular family who were on a low income never used the gas for about four weeks last summer. And on the fifth week, when they put £10 on their key, they used that on their meter, and they found because of the accumulation of the stand in charge, they then only had £2.50 to put towards heating their home. So the next day, this family had to decide whether or not they went out and put another £10 on to pay for the gas, or whether they should use that £10 on buying food. So, you know, this is what this is what the problem is with these these standard charges. This is why it needs to be sorted out, because people like that, it pushes those people onto, you know, who were on low incomes to make a choice between eating and heating. And I just want to say, it really is only the companies that benefit from from the system that's already in place. In fact, one one particular company in 2018 had actually made a profit of £575 million. So, you know, this is why I just think it's important that we need to get this sorted out with this standard charge, and it needs to be fair right across the board. Thank you.
Councillor Tucker.
Thank you, Chair. I'm slightly disappointed that there was a feeling that the motion needed so radical an amendment when it was actually submitted in in good faith. I'm not denigrating any of the measures that we have in place within the council to help people with fuel poverty, warm homes, et cetera. The purpose of my motion was to highlight that there is an injustice, there is unfairness, and that we should tackle this. The council as a as a body putting in place measures to help people doesn't tackle the underlying problem, and my motion was meant to tackle, to help tackle that. The amended motion does, to a certain extent, look at what I was trying to achieve. I am disappointed that the final sentence has been missed off because it shouldn't matter how you pay your bill. It should be one price for all across the board. There shouldn't be any injustices, any unfairness. The amended motion gives partly what I wanted to achieve. So for the purposes of my residents and to be able to help them, I will support this motion. I don't agree fully with the amendment. I don't agree fully with the fact that it's been overtaken by political issues, and I was not trying to make councillor Clare feel uncomfortable. I was actually thanking him for pointing out the fact that I write in a chaotic way. I write from my heart. I don't write from my head. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak on substantive motion, can you indicate using the chat function, please? Councillor McDonald.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Susan McDonald from Peterley West. Surely the sensible approach to this is to accept the amendment, but include the last sentence to make it fully equitable and fair, specifically because it specifically then references the inequality of the payment prepayment meters. It's a sensible thing to do, rather than just to completely ignore it. Thank you.
Any other members wishing to speak? If no other members wish to speak, I'll bring in councillor Shaw with his right to reply.
Thank you, Chair. The point of the amendment at day wasn't any way or shape or form to change any of the sentiment in regards to what councillor Tucker had brought in front of the council. It was to enhance it. And I clearly set out a methodology that will be necessary in order for the changes that she's suggesting to actually be implemented by government. In the normal scheme of things, if this had been raised, I would have probably had the opportunity to speak to councillor Tucker, and we could have worked together and put forward a motion which would have explained all this in the way that it's set out. And obviously, I could have put forward within the the report itself how we would successfully expect the government to be able to deliver on this, which I did set out in the in the report that I gave in regards to this motion. So I don't really say what the point is in regards to why council had concerns about it. We simply didn't think that it was clear in its intent, and we wanted it clarified to ensure that we get the get the outcome that she was trying to achieve here.
Thank you. We'll now move over to the vote on substantive motion.
Thanks, Chair. So just to reiterate, we're now voting on the substantive motion as moved by councillor Shaw. A box should appear on your screen with options to vote for, against or abstain. Simply select the preference that you wish to take and click submit. If you click submit, you'll then get a green tick, which will appear confirming your vote of choice, which will indicate that your vote is cast. And at that point, you can click the done button, and the box will disappear. If for any reason that box doesn't appear on your screen, you can access it from the voting icon on your toolbar, which is the one that looks like a little filing cabinet with the letter F on it. That should bring the box up. Alternatively, you can vote using the box that appears in the chat function. But if you use the chat function, you won't get a green tick confirming your selection. If anybody has issues with voting, if you could let us know before we vote, we close the vote, please. Thank you.
No, but this is my last meeting, yeah?
Last full council.
Yeah.
Thank you, members. We've got 96 members in the meeting, and 96 votes have been cast, so I'm closing the vote now. Thank you, members. We have 96 votes cast, 78 for, against 12, and abstentions six. Therefore, the motion is carried. I'll briefly pause while I put them on the screen. Thank you. Can I just remind members to remain unmuted at all times if you're not speaking, please? Can I now invite councillor Angela Sertes to move her motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Before I start, can I just say I make no apologies for the timing of this motion. It's a response from numerous emails from community members and organisations. And the other thing that I'll say is I can't believe that in 2021 I would be presenting a motion like this to council. In Durham, we have seen the numbers of pupils eligible for free school meals increase by over 3,000 in the last year to approximately 20,500 children, and the figure continues to rise. The council has directly supported over 100 community groups providing emergency food provision, whilst continually supporting the county's food banks. And we have also invested in new programmes to provide low-cost nutritious food in areas of deprivation. When the government initially withdrew support for holiday hunger in the October half term, the council stepped in and provided vouchers to the value £15 to free school male eligible children in mainstream education and supported 185 holiday activities with food projects, and that was all from its own resources. Following another U-turn, the government bowed to public pressure, and a well-known footballer, and provided much-needed funding for the Christmas and February half term. And with this additional resource, we were able to support more families than the 20,000 pupils eligible for free school meals. And we provided, we were able to provide vouchers to the value of £20 per child per week in both the Christmas and the February half-term holidays to prevent further holiday hunger, and this included provision for foods and utilities. The council has invested a further 1.4 million into the voluntary and community sector to help with emergency food and welfare provision, as well as supporting food banks, direct provision of emergency food boxes. direct provision of emergency food boxes and funding low-cost sustainable food distribution in disadvantaged communities. And this builds on the council's support to financially vulnerable households, where through our local council tax support scheme, we do not cap the level of support available under our scheme. Our scheme is one of only a handful nationally and the only one in our region that still maintains the important safety net for five, for that, for financially vulnerable households, with around eighty percent of households eligible under our scheme receiving one hundred percent reduction and having no council tax to pay. And on top of this, the council's policy of topping up entitlement for those working age claimants left with a bill to pay by up a further three hundred pounds of support next year will be the envy of other councils as we seek to support our residents through the post-COVID recovery process. This council notes the consistent high rates of poverty across our county. We recognise the growing concern amongst our health and care professionals of the current situation and the likely exacerbation of poverty figures through the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic and economic uncertainty as we move through twenty twenty-one. Over the last year, we have also seen a dramatic increase in the welfare, the council's welfare assistance scheme, with an increase of fifty-five percent in the value of daily living expenses awards and they relate, and those relating to food and welfare. The claimant count in the county shows an increase of fifty-six percent to nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy people in the year to December twenty twenty, whilst twenty-two thousand six hundred people are estimated to be furloughed. And it is estimated that eleven thousand claims by eligible self-employed people have been made under the Self-Employment Income Support Scheme. That starts twenty-three up to the thirty-first of December, representing fifty-seven percent of the, of the eligible population. So I call, sorry, this, this council notes that in Durham, we are seeing a crisis of food poverty, which is having a devastating impact on families and communities in our county. This crisis has accelerated significantly through the politics of austerity since twenty-ten. And whilst the economic contraction over the last year has laid bare the fragility of family finances in too many households in our county, the situation is truly shocking for one of the richest nations, nation, nations in the world and highlights the gross inequality of the UK in twenty twenty-one. The National Food Strategy is the first independent review of England's entire food system for seventy-five years. Its purpose is to set out a vision for the kind of food system that we should be building for the future and a plan for how to achieve that vision. It is headed by Henry, Henry Dimbleby and next reports to government early this year. The Right to Food Campaign is arguing that eleven million people nationally of food poverty should be central to this strategy. Enshrining the right to food in law will clarify government obligations on food poverty. This council calls for the right to food to be incorporated in the National Food Strategy. And we ask the chief executive to write to Henry Dimbleby, independent lead of the National Food Strategy, to further this request. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The motion requires a second, there?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kevin Shaw? Thank you, Chair. Food poverty is reaching a crisis point up and down the country. And we all know the very real impacts that a decade of austerity has had. As those with the least have been hit the hardest. So what would be very interesting to say is councillor Wokes has spoken of hypocrisy, to say how the party which reduced austerity responds to this. The North East has the second highest rate of child poverty in the UK here, at thirty-five percent, behind London at thirty-nine percent. This includes the UK's biggest increase in child poverty from two thousand and fourteen to fifteen to eighteen to nineteen. All twelve North East councils are included in the twenty UK local authority areas, which saw the highest increases in child poverty. And the impacts of COVID have made the existing crisis even worse. The right to food is a basic human right and people should have dignity and the ability to buy their own food and not have to rely on charity or food banks to feed their families. If the right of food was placed at the centre of the food, their food strategy and put into a legislative footing, the government's obligations on food poverty would be clarified and government bodies could be held accountable for violations. An immediate benefit of this will be the end of the five-week wait for universal credit, which cruelly leaves families going weeks without being able to afford even the basic necessities. At Durham County Council, we work tirelessly within the poverty agenda. It is admirable what we do for our residents. But we must take this opportunity today for members to agree that we write to the Chair of the National Food Strategy calling for the right to food to be incorporated into the government's National Food Strategy with the aim of identifying the food system we should be building for the future, together with a plan for how to achieve it. Chair, I urge all members to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move over to the debate on the motion. We have councillor Adam.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Eddie Adam, representing Acliff West. As with the previous motion, it is disappointing that we have to discuss these issues in a country as wealthy as ours. However, just this week, we have received the latest government data on poverty levels in County Durham. And I was shocked to learn the impact that austerity and the pandemic has had on our residents. The figures shockingly revealed that absolute poverty is estimated at eighteen point one percent of our childrens under the age of sixteen were living in absolute poverty in County Durham, therefore indicating incomes in the county are too low to meet the basic needs to live a healthy life. In-work families in County Durham and the North East have seen large increases in the number of children living in poverty since two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, increases estimate at twenty-seven point eight percent. This also, this is also reflected in the numbers of our children receiving free school meals, as already indicated by councillor Certhes. Around nineteen thousand pupils were eligible for free school meals in County Durham, representing massive twenty-six point six percent of all registered pupils. This is up from the spring census that indicated we had seventeen thousand two hundred pupils. The ward I represent, Acliff West Ward, had the highest proportion of pupils eligible for free school meals at a shocking forty-four point five percent, nearly half of the children in my ward. Again, this is an increase of nearly five percent since the spring. Of the sixty-three wards in the county, twenty-eight had higher proportions than the county average. Chair, this is absolutely shocking. Councillor Certhes has already stated, the Right to Food Campaign is arguing for a million, eleven million people in food poverty should be central to a right to food, food strategy. We have seen footballer Marcus Rashford leading the way to make sure hungry children are fed during the school holidays. However, we should not be relying on celebrities to raise the significant issue of food poverty. Chair, food is a basic human right and it's important that this right is written into law to help some of the most vulnerable people in our community. The campaign around the right to food should be a priority after seeking the levels of food, food poverty, seeing food poverty soar in County Durham. Local food banks struggling to keep up demand since the start of the pandemic. I personally was supporting our residents through a local charitable organisation called Junction Seven, dropping off shopping and food parcels to local families. Those in work and out of work, we simply cannot afford to put food on the table anymore. It's shameful but true. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Owen Gunn, representing Wellington and Hunteray Division and Cabinet Member for Children and Young People Services. Uh, Chair, I think that the increase, um, in children with free school meals has been covered very ably by previous speakers. It is of great concern. But I think also that all of us here have seen the rise in food banks in our communities. And all of us, I believe, have helped and supported it in those communities. But I want to pay tribute to the individuals and voluntary and community groups who have gone the extra mile to provide food to those in need. And I also want to pay tribute to our school staff who have recognised the difficulties of families in making choices, not about what they are going to eat that day, but about whether they are going to eat that day. Those staff have also stepped up to help. UNICEF has estimated that ten percent of British children under the age of fifteen live in houses affected by severe food insecurity, at the second worst affected country in Europe. And the Tressle Trust has reported a hundred and seven percent rise in emergency food parcels given to children in April twenty twenty compared to the previous year. Chair, childhood food insecurity is linked to poor physical health outcomes, including malnutrition and obesity, mental health issues such as depression and aggressive behaviour, and poor school attendance and attainment. It affects children's future life chances. And there's no doubt that food insecurity has been exacerbated by both the economic fallout of the pandemic and compounded by the ill effects of lockdown on children from deprived backgrounds. Chair, I commend this motion to everyone in this virtual council meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Hovell?
Thank you, Chair. Throughout the pandemic, I've seen firsthand how food poverty affects families. Many families have struggled with food poverty. And yet, we're the fifth richest country in the world. I only ever thought I would see food poverty in Africa, third world countries, not our own. My personal experience of food poverty is that I've seen the sacrifices made by mothers, parents, skipping meals so their, their children can eat. Many families rely on friends, neighbours and community groups, churches, faith groups, food banks and others to help them feed their families. Right now, too many people, including working households, are struggling to eat well and afford the basic essentials for their families. And their health suffers the consequences. Food is a mechanism linking poverty with health and social outcomes. It is also a fundamental human right, a fundamental human right, key challenges when trying to improve health and reduce inequalities and reduce health costs. Emergency food is not a long-term solution to hunger. Food poverty is preventable. It has a negative health impact and economic outcomes as well as social and psychological impacts. The council are committed to reducing health inequalities for County Durham. Food poverty is a real concern. The motion is to invest and create more sustainable, long-term and enriching solutions. Chairman, I fully support and welcome the motion this morning.
Thank you. Councillor Clare?
Thank you, uh, Chair. Councillor John Clare, Acliff Northam Midridge. A right to food motion has already been debated by Liverpool City Council, and I was able to watch that meeting on YouTube. At that meeting, something said by the Assistant Mayor had an impact that the government's own guidelines on helping people on the lowest income would spend seventy percent of their income on food. We wring our hands about the gap in health and age of death between the wealthiest and the poorest communities in our county. And the answer is staring us in the face in that fact, that there, there are people who, from the moment they are born, will never eat healthily in the whole of their lives and end up scratching what sustenance together they can, including what they can get at the wonderful people who've fear for, from the wonderful people at the food banks, who've stepped in to do voluntarily what our government is failing to do statutorily. We have all kinds of civil rights. The welfare state of the late nineteen forties guaranteed us a right to a free education, to free medical treatment, to housing, to social security. It is absolutely unacceptable in one of the richest countries in the world that we still do not acknowledge a right to food in the National Food Strategy and therefore in law. And I commend this motion to the council. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Richard Bellbaum, Castle West Division. Um, this is one of those motions where I think we can all agree with the underlying sentiment that nobody should be going hungry in twenty twenty-one in Great Britain. But some of the surrounding rhetoric is highly dubious. And I do feel that by exaggerating the case, some speakers are undermining the case. Councillor Certhes lists at length all the work done by the council to mitigate food poverty and welfare issues generally, not mentioning that most of this money during the COVID period has been provided from central government and passported by the council on to its recipient. You're opening line on a crisis of food poverty with a devastating impact. Is that not just a little bit exaggerated? Food banks have been mentioned, government, council, supermarkets. Many individuals have supported food banks and food deliveries to, to the vulnerable to an amazing degree during the, during COVID pandemic, to the extent that many food banks now put surplus stock sales basis. No referral notice needed. Some food banks are overwhelmed from time to time with donations. This is happening across the county, from Woodhouse, close to Anfield Plain to Durham City. So let's not pretend that food banks are overwhelmed. The current case is actually going in the opposite direction. Of course, you can argue that we shouldn't have food banks at all and it should be all done through benefits and payment to people directly. Again, you could say the government's reacted to that by the twenty pounds increase in universal credit levels and the significant sums governed, given by the council, to the council by the government to help mitigate welfare issues. Eleven million people in food poverty, really? Eleven million? That's a very big number. Are you really suggesting that eleven million people are going hungry? Where does that number come from? And that must be done about relative poverty and relative measures can be twisted to say what you want. And I would suggest that this United Campaign
One minute remaining, councillor.
is doing exactly that. The ability to eat well and affordably is a complex issue encompassing food prices, incomes, knowledge of how to cook, time available to cook, et cetera. This council could do something to tackle some of those issues. But I'm afraid this motion is rhetoric and doesn't do anything practical to help at all. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McKeon?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that councillor Bell has never himself experienced food poverty. I for one am disgusted by the sophistry in those remarks around people not being able to eat. I'm sorry, it's absolutely disgusting. Um, it's not a complex issue, actually. People can't afford to eat. That is a simple fact and it is something that the government can truly do something about. It's a matter of dignity, not just eating, of dignity. Poverty isn't just a lack of resource, it's a lack of agency. And in a wealthy, democratic and as we're always told, global Britain, hunger is humiliating. Look, I, I have to say, we have a wide breadth of ideologies in the chamber. I hope we can all agree, we want our residents to have dignity. I do have sympathy with some of those of New York position benches because if my party's legacy government were starving families, then, well, I don't know how I would be able to square my support of that government with my own beliefs and my own values. I think the only way that I could do it would be by supporting a motion like this that's gonna start to undo some of those disastrous policies. This is our opportunity. We've got a national food strategy moving forward. It should be about people's rights. It should be about access to our most fundamental rights for survival. Thank you.
Councillor Tucker?
Thank you, Chair. Um, sorry, I've got a motorcycle going past my living room with a very noisy exhaust. Um, thank you, councillor Certhes, for bringing this motion this morning. Um, it highlights once again the choice between eating and heating. How on earth is anyone supposed to provide a warm, nourishing meal if they don't have heat and light? Councillor Hovell has highlighted the fact that food poverty is preventable. Is fuel poverty not preventable? Surely they go hand in hand. Our children, our residents deserve to have food. They deserve to have They deserve to have heat. They deserve to have light. It all goes hand in hand with the issues that we're faced with. And listening to some of the comments that have been made this morning from fellow councillors, I do wonder how long we're going to dwell on the past and continue to blame previous governments for the crises that we're faced with today. Surely, we can't change the past. So we should just maybe move on and deal with today's crises. Thank you for the motion. I will support it because I do believe that people should have the right to eat. But I also believe that they should have the right to heat and light and that fuel poverty as well as food poverty are preventable. Thank you.
councillor Lethbridge.
Thank you, Chair. I've listened attentively to what has been said so far. I think fairly highly of councillor Richard Bell. He frequently presents intelligent observations in his contributions. But I really am incredulous that he could use the word exaggeration when it comes to the numbers. The, if you are, well, if you're a councillor, you are likely to be a school governor. If you're an active school governor, you know what the effects are in the schools of our children who are seeking, whose parents are seeking extra food. This, it really leaves me almost, almost, I'll say, speechless. I, in the time that I was chairman of the council, as, well indeed, when I was vice chairman, councillor Bill Kelletner, he was the chairman, made a point, a policy of ours was to go around as many food banks as we could in the county in that year. And I'll say to you that when you're standing, whether it be in concert or in Chesterley Street or in wherever, in West Auckland, and you see people come in embarrassed, as we noted, embarrassed to have to come and admit that they don't have enough to eat, then we know there is something wrong in our society. We must protect our children. We must support this motion. And I certainly do welcome it. Thank you.
councillor Napier.
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, everyone. Councillor Napier, lady of the council, at least for five and a half weeks, I believe. Chairman, I definitely didn't have any intention of speaking at all at this morning's meeting. But I must respond to both councillor Bell and councillor Tucker. I think Richard, who I've got a lot of time for, you've heard what John Lethbridge has said. But it appears that he's got selective amnesia and that he's forgetting about the last 10 years. Now, what sort of society do we live in? And you've all heard me say this before, whether it was in the council chamber or in cabinet and definitely people around this constituency had public meetings. When the thousandth richest people in this country are worth in excess of 700 billion pounds, have actually seen their wealth increase exponentially during the pandemic. And yet during the coalition years and followed on now by the conservative government that either froze or capped household income where it didn't meet the cost of living. Now, just to discard councillor Tucker the last 10 years, in 2010, we were probably delivering 10,000 food parcels a year. So not this marvellous government who've given money over the last 12 months, Richard, before the pandemic, that there had increased to one and a half million food parcels a year. Now, the problem that I have with this is that any children born after 2010 who are living in a low income household, who are dependent on food parcels and food banks, et cetera, et cetera, will believe that is the norm. They'll believe that that is normality for their parents to go down to the church or East Durham Trust or wherever to get food parcels to keep them alive because they can't afford to put the bare essentials on the table. So just to discard the 10 year prior mine is ridiculous. You know, the 1% richest in this world are worth as much as the poorest 3.1 billion. And if we can't have the right to food, and I would hope mine, that everyone supports this motion. I think Richard, and I mean, I like Richard, but over the last few months, he's morphing into something between Boris Johnson and Donald Trump here. Moved from a Ted Heath Tory, he's moved right here to the right. So I wasn't going to speak, but I had to say that, listening to what both Richard Bell and Tanya Tucker has said this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Hopgood.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Like councillor Napier, I didn't have any intention in speaking on this because I think the motion in its own right, I find it incredible that anyone wouldn't want to support the sentiment of it. It's the politics that's been brought into it that I object to from members within here and members who seem to have amnesia prior to 2010. The Trussell Trust was set up in 1997. It started opening food banks in 2000. And in 2006, it expanded massively. So if we're going to look backwards, we need to look further backwards. But I actually agree with councillor Tucker, it's time to stop looking backwards. It's time to deal with the here and now and move forward and look forward for what people need and want now. But please, if you're going to bring up the past, then make sure you go all the way back and not just what's convenient for your rhetoric at the moment.
councillor Chaplow.
Jean Chaplow from the DNR Ward. I worked in school meals and I knew that Johnny got a meal on the Friday night and he was waiting on Monday for something else. That was the only meal that child got from Friday till Monday. And if you're talking Mr Bell, what about Maggie Thatcher taking the milk that the children used to get? She took that from our children. I'm sorry, when you start to talk about children, get into a school and see little Johnny that's not getting anything to eat. What happens during the school holidays has always, always frightened me. They did a survey at Gateshead. They weighed the children before school holidays. And afterwards, when they came back, they weighed them again. And majority of children had lost half a stone. Our children need to be fed and fed properly. They want the money to feed them. Please, if you can sit tonight and eat your dinner, just remember there's a little child somewhere not eating anything. Thank you.
councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I wasn't going to get involved with this. The basic right to food is a given. And I'm full of admiration for those who can manage their budgets in such a way. But how many of these people relying on food banks see their right to a given as having the latest iPhone, big screen television, whatever else, fags and whatever else they put before the food, they put it there for themselves rather than the children. So yes, by all means, we need to have people fed. But we've also got to bear in mind that they are capable of decisions. And the decision if they have their fags, drink drugs, big screen televisions, et cetera, before food, that will then, it really needs to be policed better. Thank you.
councillor Patterson.
Thanks, Chairman. I wasn't going to speak on this, but just hearing those comments from councillor Richardson there, there's one thing I just wanted to add to that is that these are children we're talking about. And these children, you know, need that food on the table. We cannot blame children and we can't penalise children for parental choices. Yes, we need to educate the parents, but we can't blame the children and we can't take it out on the children for parental choices. Now leave it there, Chair. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please indicate using chat function. We have no one else, therefore I'll bring in councillor Sertes as a right to reply.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I was just going to talk about moving forward. But I think that some of the comments that have been made then, unfortunately, I do have to reflect and go back overs. The Trussell Trust, yes, was set up in 1997. And the reason why that was, was because we previously had eight years of Tory ruling then. So the Trussell Trust was set up to respond to that. Just need to make that clear. The other thing as well is that, Richard Bell, your comments, thank you very much for them. I commend the government giving the UC out to the people, but aren't you about to take it off them again? So basically, you're giving them a bit of a step up and then you're taking it all away again. And the point of food banks and excess food and these community food banks and all of these places, that's the point why we need the right to food being put into the National Food Strategy. People shouldn't have to go and get a loaf of bread and a pint of milk from a doorstep where somebody's donated leftover food. It's not acceptable and we shouldn't be accepting this. And the other thing that I want to make clear as well is, is child poverty. In Durham, we have 22.3% child poverty. But I just want to point out that 12.2% of that are from families who have one or two parents in work. So these people in child poverty are not benefit people. These people who are being paid, these people who are not being paid proper wages. These are people who are on zero hour contracts. These are people who might trek for miles to only to be told that they can't go to work. And this last year, when some of these places closed down, the retail shops and all of that through this COVID pandemic, it's plunged these people who are in work into further poverty. Hence my comments about furlough. And you've also, councillor Bell, made mention about, you know, reference to government money being the bailout here. I never said that we didn't get the money off the government. In fact, what I said was, and then didn't we get government U-turns? Thank you, Chair. Didn't we get government U-turns, which then made you then hand out and give us more money in order to feed the burns? The Marmot Review talked about a sustainable food model in 2015. This government, this current government, adopted the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. The first one is end poverty in all its forms. So yes, councillor Tucker, I am including food poverty in all of these stats because child poverty isn't just one poverty, it's a multiple of poverties. And the second sustainable goal from the UN is to end hunger, to achieve food security, improve nutrition and promote sustainable agriculture. And that's just not looking at families, that's looking at business and that's looking at the country as a whole. Chair, I don't really want to go on any further. I've gone through a raft of emotions bringing this motion today. I just urge people to please support the motion and do the right thing. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. We'll now move over to the vote. There's still a few members that need to vote, so I'll give it a few more minutes before I close the vote.
Chairman, it's councillor Carl Marshall here. I'm not having an option to vote on my iPad, but I'd like to vote for the motion, please.
councillor Marshall, your voting function will be in your meeting chat, but we've recorded that, thank you. We're closing the vote now, members. Thank you, members. Votes cast 94, those for 87. Those against 5, abstentions 2. I'll briefly pause while it comes on the screen. Motion is carried. Thank you, members. Can I now invite councillor Lucy Hovells to move her motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. And I hope this motion is supported by everyone this morning. As we approach the year since the first lockdown of the COVID pandemic, the County Council of Durham wishes to acknowledge the debt and gratitude of our community for the numerous groups and organisations for the service given to protect and assist us all. Wish to thank all the staff, the volunteers, bear with me. I wish to thank all the staff, the volunteers across the whole of the County Council in all the various roles undertaken, support businesses, community and individual residents. All the teaching and non-teaching staff who have kept our schools open for the children of both key workers and those requiring support. The Blue Light Emergency Services, fire, police, ambulance, mountain and coastal rescue who have continued to keep our community safe. Our colleagues in the National Health Service, residential and nursing homes and community care services, for which we will be entirely grateful. for which we will be entirely grateful. Key workers from all parts of the county who have kept the arteries of our society working and feeding the nation. The community hubs, community groups across the whole county who supported those shielding in need of support. And all the residents who have continued to act to be safe and save lives and save the NHS. This has been and continues to be challenging for us all where everyone has risen to the challenge to which we thank them and thank them formally in recording for the future prosperity. We must not forget those who have been greatly affected by the pandemic, the families who have lost loved ones, those who have had and continue to be affected by the virus. Our thoughts and support go out to them all. Chairman, I move the motion this morning.
Thank you. The motion requires a second, Chair?
Yes Chairman. Councillor Audrey Lang Peter Lee, East Division. It's hard to believe that yesterday marked the first anniversary of the first national lockdown. The last year has without question been hugely challenging and the response of our residents and all our key workers has been incredible. I have also been touched by the names in which our local communities have provided much needed support during this incredibly challenging time. Whilst the pandemic is by no means over, I would like to add my sincere thanks by seconding this motion. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Bell?
Thanks Chair. I'm sure that all members will support this motion today. So I would like to start by joining with councillor Hovells in thanking all the groups that she's mentioned. Amid all the talk of the schools reopening back on the 8th of this month, it was often overlooked that most had never closed and the teachers had had the twin challenges of classroom teaching and online teaching at the same time. But in reality I think that most of our workers are key workers, are they not? When I think of the people that I've relied on over the past 12 months, from the farmer that grows the crops or the animals that after processing and retail become my food, through to the garage mechanic who kept my car on the road through its MOT, the plumber who came and fixed my broken water closet, and trust me, you don't want to be without a water closet. There were so many others that have helped and continued working through difficult circumstances and I think it's quite right that we thank all of them and remembering also the people that have suffered for all the reasons during this pandemic. I think the county and the county council and its workforce have responded magnificently during the past year. So indeed, thank you to all of you.
Councillor Shuttleworth?
Thank you Chairman. This isn't a motion, this is a statement, but I don't think anybody would not vote to support the statement because it supports everybody who's helped everybody out there over the past year. And just while I'm on, I've never known in all the years of such political meetings over the last, why we're doing virtual meetings. You know, we're here to serve the public, we're servants of the public and I hope people remember that on the 6th of May, but we'll all support the statement anyway.
I'll now refer to the head of Legal Democrat Services.
Chair, thank you. Just to pick up on that procedural point raised by councillor Shuttleworth, there's nothing in the constitution that says statements can't be put forward as motions. If it's supported by the council, it will become a collective statement of the authority.
Councillor Hobgood?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I'd also like to support the motion as it's stated, but also adding a couple of things. There are many people who aren't classed as key workers who've had to work from home, who've had to balance work and home life in a way they've never had to do before. And I think that also needs to be acknowledged because those jobs have kept communities going. There are people on the end of the phones, including many council staff who've worked from home in environments they're just not used to and many of them have had to combine that with home education, with homeschooling and I can only imagine what a challenge that has been. Bear in mind my children are grown up and left. So I think that we need to thank everybody within County Durham without question for what they've done in the last year and what they'll continue to do so that we hopefully get out the end of this in a positive and proactive manner. So thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please indicate using the chat function.
Chairman, I think it's real important that it goes on record and by making this statement, motion, whatever you want to call it, it's making sure it is recorded and we are thanking everybody who's helped us through this real crisis that we've been in. Thank you Chair.
We'll now move to the vote.
Chair, it's councillor Alan Bainbridge. There's no form come up on my screen, thank you very much.
Councillor Bainbridge, if you'd like to try accessing via the voting button at the top on your toolbar, which is the icon that looks like a filing cabinet with the letter F, alternatively you can use the voting box in the chat function. If you use that, it will pick up your vote but you won't get the green tick.
Sorry Chair, it's councillor Carl Marshall again. I'm really sorry I'm having IT problems this morning but I'd like to vote for the motion.
No, thank you councillor. We're closing the vote now. Thank you members. 92 votes cast for the motion, 92 against, 0 abstentions, 0. Therefore the motion is carried. I'll briefly pause while it goes on the screen. Thank you members. That moves us on to item nine, questions from members. We have one question received for today's meeting from councillor Tucker. The question will be presented onto our screens. Councillor Tucker, can I invite you to ask your question please?
Thank you Chair, sorry about that. As members will be aware, all of us are having lots of queries about the substance that is used to fill potholes and the fact that it comes out of the hole that's recently been filled with a little bit of adverse weather. I'm just wondering if we could have some assurance that the substance that's used is actually cost effective, the best product on the market and also value for money because it doesn't seem to be when the highway repair recently completed is soon back to its original state. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stephens, the Cabinet portfolio holder, is not available to attend the meeting. Therefore can I ask councillor Rob York, who's a Cabinet Support member, to respond please?
Thanks councillor Rob York, Cabinet Support, neighbourhood and local partnerships and member for West Auckland. Chair, can I thank councillor Tucker for her question? Our highway maintenance policy is always to prioritise planned maintenance and to maximise the life and the quality of the highway. However, where we can't make a permanent repair, it becomes necessary to fill potholes on a temporary basis to ensure the integrity of the running surface. This window has proved particularly challenging for highway damage and we have repaired more than 10,000 potholes already this year. The materials and processes used in this work meets all of the necessary specifications and requirements and is to industry standards. I can assure council that this policy, which is set out in our approved plan every year, ensures that our highway maintenance teams provide the best possible value for money in difficult circumstances. Thank you.
Councillor Tucker, do you have a subsequent question?
Chair, it didn't seem to answer the question I asked. Yes, it may be to industry standards but I'm asking, is it cost effective? Because it does cost a lot of money to temporarily repair a hole in the road to then have to come back and repair it yet again. So my question basically was, is this a cost effective, value for money solution to the problem? Or would it not be better to, you know, repair the hole properly in the first place?
Councillor York, would you like to respond?
Yeah, as I highlighted, year to date we've had 10,000 potholes repaired. So as you can imagine, we've had thousands and thousands of requests. We have over 3,797 kilometres of adopted highway. We mentioned at the last council meeting, we've spent in the last five years £124.4 million on highways in the last five years. We do use industry standard materials and whatever we do is up to the job. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last item of the agenda and concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. If everyone in the meeting could please stay seated and remain on silent until the broadcast ends. Thank you.